Tonight's meeting with... Are you going to do a prayer or a pledge, Mr. Barr? Mr. Barr will lead us in the offering of the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome, I heard a voice.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Welcome to the July 24th study session. This meeting will set the agenda for the 1,974th regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting on Wednesday, August 9th, where tonight's items will be formally voted on. If you would like to speak tonight on any of these items, please approach the podium. I'll give you further direction along the way. We'll start tonight's meeting noting that we have seven members of the council present, and we will go directly to audience communication. Does anybody in the audience wish to address the council on any non-agenda items tonight? Mr. Martin, tell me your name and address, please. You have three minutes.
I'll be very quick. It's a long evening. Christopher Martin, the great state of Michigan. At the last council meeting, the portable air conditioning unit that was placed outside the library was there like the following day after the meeting. I know when council passes an ordinance, it has to be published in the paper twice, and the mayor has to sign, the current mayor, and before it takes effect. So I guess my question, at $143,000 for that chiller over there, and that's just a brief part of it, because you had people over there maintaining the thing. At the end of the day, when that was approved by council, did that have to wait until the minutes were approved before that took effect? Or because that chiller was over there like the day after the last council meeting?
No, I... To be sure with your answer here, I think if the administration offers a non-veto letter and it's already passed, they could proceed as if the meetings were... minutes were already approved.
Okay.
It does not formally...
Slow the process.
The risk is really that the mayor would veto something that we approved.
Okay. One other thing also is that, and I wish one of you would have asked Mr. Russell this question, because I think it really would have shown a... how the past library director wasn't involved in maintaining some of the buildings. But the... As far as, when did the first compressor or the second compressor go down? How many years ago was it? It... The whole thing didn't go into fritz, because even last summer, there was an issue with the keeping the library... This is the library on this campus. Cool. So, one thing I would have done is I would have voted that down, because we have a library at the senior center, we have one on Seven Mile. I would have had those open every day with extended hours and shut down that one there. And I'm there the most of anybody, because I don't have a computer. So I'm there every day, and it would have affected me more than people that I haven't seen there at all. Okay? That are in authority. So, I don't think that the money for that chiller... Okay, I realize that you want to keep that building open and keep and have employees be comfortable over there in that library. But really what took place is years of neglect in that particular thing, in my opinion. And it should have been asked that question. When did the thing first go into fritz? How many years ago?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is there any other audience communication? I see none. Is there any announcements or comments from the council to get us started? I see none. I will just note that the petitioner has requested to have item number seven regarding a Costco gas station addition removed from the agenda, so we will not be hearing seven tonight. To the scheduled agenda, item one is new business. That's a request to waive the city's noise ordinance from Robert Urban, Traffic Operations Engineer from MDOT, and Taylor TSC in conjunction with the M14 reconstruction project from Newburgh Road to Sheldon Road during the summer of 2024. Mr. Zlinsik, are you going to kick us off?
Yes, Council President Jolly. Tonight, we're honored to have Robert Urban with the MDOT, Taylor TSC, along with Jeff Horn. Jeff Horn's been viable on the I-275 Revive Project. We're both glad they are here this evening and talk about next year's project as continue to improve the road network around City Livonia. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff and Robert. Thank you.
Your names and positions, please.
Good evening. Jeff Horn, MDOT. I am the project manager of 275 and M14.
Thank you.
And my name is Bob Urban. I am the Traffic Operations Engineer for the Taylor TSC, the office for MDOT that is overseeing these projects.
Okay.
So, MDOT has an exciting project coming up next year, M14. We're going to rebuild from Sheldon down to Newburgh. It is a three-year project. It's going to completely remove the base. We're going to repair 17 bridges, repair the drainage infrastructure, and also we're partnering with the City of Livonia to include part of the water main in that project as well. So it's a full rebuild, similar to 275, similar to the 96 job back in 2014. And we're really excited. And in order to do this project, per MDOT standards, we have to do some work at night, such as building bridges, maintaining our schedule, things like that. So we respectfully request that we could waive the noise ordinance waiver for this project.
Are you able to give us a little bit of a spectrum of what kind of noises people might encounter? And how often? I mean, you're not talking for all of 2024, every night, right?
No, that is not the time.
Give us a little bit more defined scope of what you're talking about.
Sure. So our contractor typically likes to work days, okay? Sawing of concrete joints, that could occur at night. Material deliveries could occur at night. Paving of the concrete, paving of either the roadway or the bridges could occur at night. So we really don't limit it, what the contractor kind of can't do as far as that goes. But for the most part, it's 95% daytime work, 5% nighttime work.
Okay. Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you, gentlemen, for both being here tonight. So if I understand this correctly, the two of you are responsible for the reason why there's all these construction cones everywhere?
Not quite, but we're happy to be working.
No, on a serious note, I know a lot of work is being done on this, you know, mixing bowl, as some people want to refer to it as. I know you're doing a lot of work. Todd Zlinsik, our city engineer, gives a lot of great updates on what MDOT's doing there. I know it's frustrating for people's commutes, going north and south, east and west, and whatnot, but well warranted and looking forward to you guys finally being done, so I can go drive around and get places and tell you my manners. I'd like to offer an approving on consent and some objections from my colleagues.
Mr. Barr?
So I have to ask this question, because I know a lot of residents are asking it, and since we have the people up here, I'm going to ask. If I'm not mistaken, the 275 project still goes through the... through next summer, right?
Per the contract, yes. However, our contractor is finishing early, so we anticipate being 99% finished this year, so...
So when this starts, that will be done?
It won't be done, but it'll be 95%, 99% done. For all intents and purposes, yes.
Will all 275 lanes be open, do you believe? Oh, well, you just eliminated my question.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. No. There will be some work carrying over next year. So when you pour concrete on a bridge deck, you have to let it cure 28 days. Then we do an epoxy overlay afterwards. We did not do an epoxy overlay on the Southbound Bridges this year or last year, because pavement markings, things like that. So there will be work next year on Southbound.
So it's not every day they got MDOT in front of me? And like I said, listen, we're all excited about the final product. And I lived half mile off 96 when you did that. That was a super exciting project. And we've all enjoyed the benefits of that for years. But I know I'm not the only one that feels like every detour, and the detours off the detour are closed right now. And then when you hear in the midst of what's already just a crazy... I mean, 696, 275, several of the surface streets. I mean, I've had multiple times I'm trying to get places, and you think you're getting around it, and then you find out, oh, here's another closure. And then you find out they're throwing the M14 thing in too. And I'm just curious, love the work getting done, but what's the thinking in overlapping these to this extent? And just to this one specifically, why couldn't this have been put off one more year to make sure 275's done? Just because it's going to be disaster.
It's tough, but Governor Gretchen Whitmer signed the Rebuilding Michigan Program. That's $3.5 billion of infrastructure money that is sunsetting very soon. So it's good that we are capturing that money before that money goes away. If you wanted to wait two years, there would be no project, because we are capturing that Rebuilding Michigan funds. And the reason you see construction projects everywhere? Because you're ballooning. You're throwing billions of dollars on the road projects. So it's not going to last forever, and you're going to look back and say, wow, such a great...
Forgive me for not knowing all the details behind... I mean, I recognize some of the things you're saying, but was that federal dollars that's being deployed towards this, or was that a state program?
That is a state program.
So was there... Is that deadline that you're all trying to work within, was that just the deadline picked for the program? Or was there a reason for that?
That was picked by the governor's office. That was not local, that was not MDOT.
We have a deadline that's been declared, and we're trying to get everything done before that.
Correct.
And that's why we're dealing with all this at once.
Correct.
Noted.
And that Rebuilding Michigan Program is quickly fading away because of the high interest rates. So we're going to bond less. So even though two years ago, we might have said $3 billion, we might only bond $2 billion based on the high interest rates.
Thanks for answering my questions. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, you... Ms. McIntyre?
As we get more knowledgeable, and I mean, we as council gets more knowledgeable about specific decibel levels and, you know, decibel of this high noise item versus regular traffic decibels, are you able to give us, and I don't mean tonight, are you able to give us what the decibel level of this... So if we approve the noise waiver, right? Are you able to give us a maximum decibel level that residents surrounding that area could expect?
That is very difficult to determine. Are you talking about a max decibel level, a peak at one second? Are you talking an average of five minutes, 10 minutes?
I mean, let's say, and I'm, you know, maybe we need to get some input from Todd here, because, and I understand why you're asking for the noise waiver, right? It helps the project get done faster, and that was the issue with 96. But if you're, you know, if we're going to have a waiver and you've got some peak volumes that last for 30 seconds, that's very different from if you're going to have a high, a significantly higher level of noise for an hour late in the evening.
Absolutely.
And I understand with the nature of construction projects, right? You cannot look at your project schedule and say, oh, well, you know, from 10 to 11, right, in this area, it's going to be this. But just trying to dimension it a little bit. So we understand the impact, or better understand the impact on residents of what we're approving. And again, I understand exactly why you asked for this and how it benefits the residents in the long term by getting the project done faster.
So if you were to take a peak decibel level, say you're saw cutting concrete to saw cut the joint, right? You're saw cutting for 45 seconds, and then the guy turns the machine off, moves it around, and so you have a low for three minutes. If you take the average of four minutes, it's a lot different than taking the peak of 45 seconds.
Right.
So if we were to take a max peak, it would essentially say we couldn't do certain operations at night. And our specifications say you have to do it at night because of a lot of different factors, based on weather, sunlight, things like that. So it's very important.
And sometimes ability to close, right? Ability to redirect traffic or, you know, all those things.
Yep. So did I answer your question properly, or...
You would... Let me put it this way. You addressed the question very, very well. And I understand why it can't be addressed, right, with specificity.
And then are you taking...
Or answered with specificity.
And then are you taking the noise reading at the property line? And then, you know, so it all varies.
Right.
It's so subjective.
You know, we heard a lot during the reconstruction of 96 from the residents who lived adjacent to that about the extent to which, and these were... When you get a few calls, right, then you say this is... It's not bothering most people. But when you get 20 calls and 20 emails, you get, and there are people having trouble sleeping, right? Then you get the sense that this really is a quality of life issue.
So that I-96 job in 2014 is completely different than M14, just because that was a very expedited project.
Okay.
Contractor had $125,000 per day on the line. He could get incentivized. We were working 16 to 18 hours per day out there for 165 days straight.
Okay.
275, we're doing mostly day work with 2% nighttime work. So we don't have the incentive for the contractor to get it done all in six months.
Mr. Zlinsik keeps waiting to say something, then I start talking.
I just want to ask, you know, he reframed back from the 96 project. Basically, what happened was in the 96 project 2014, they had bridges. So come midnight, they're on the bridge, you know, getting the bridge deck down. That was the...
Say that again.
But that's, if you could hear the reverberation around the city, whatever, and that was because that was their first bridge to get the money, you know, to the seed money to get them going. So we've learned with MDOT, if there's a problem, we try to work together. We get phone calls also, but we will try to work, again, if there's issues to relocate or rework with the contractor and MDOT. But typically, those are more bridges that were along that corridor compared to this project. As Jeff had alluded to, it's a little different. There's still bridges, but there's a lot more bridge work that was done, and you could hear it along that corridor. So thanks.
Ms. Toy?
You know, the saving grace, and thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may, of the MDOT folks. Thank you very much for all the work you do up there, because like you said, when you have money, you go for it. And I think if you're going from Newburgh to Sheldon Road, thank goodness, we don't have a lot of residents in that area. I mean, that abut that expressway. So when you do the expressway, are you widening it at all? Or you're just digging it up to make it smoother or whatever? Is that what you're doing?
We are just replacing in kind.
Replace it?
Yes.
Well, listen, I just want to say thank you very, very much. I served in the state for almost 20 years, and you guys do a fantastic... In the legislature, so don't yell at me. But no, you did a great job then, and you're doing a good job now. Appreciate it so much. Thanks.
Thank you.
I thought she meant state pen myself, but...
Yeah, yeah, I did.
Are you having an approving on consent? Is there any objection from the audience? I see none. You're free to go. You don't have to come to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Item two is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance from Nick Cornell, General Manager of Supernatural Spirits and Brewing LLC, to host the Wild Wood Sour Fest event on Saturday, August 26th, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. with live music and DJs on the property of 36685 Plymouth Road. Good evening. Your name and address, please?
I'm Nick Cornell. My home address?
Business.
Let's go with business. 36685 Plymouth Road, Livonia, Michigan, 48150.
Okay, tell us about this.
So yeah, this is the Wild Wood Sour Fest. We, you know, we're a brewery, and we, you know, brew all our beer on site. But this is the third annual one we've done. And usually we have about a bunch of beer on tap outside in our front lawn, live music. And usually we have about 18 different sour beers on tap, which we're kind of known for to some degree, I'd say.
Donavick moved the last motion by consent. There's no support because it's a study. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Oh, yeah, you're fine. I didn't want to interrupt you either. And yeah, live music from probably 3:00 to 11:00 is what we're looking at right now.
Okay. What is, what is behind the name here, Wild Wood Sour? Is that a particular beer that you make?
Correct. That is basically the flagship of the festival. The Wild Wood is a oak aged sour. So it's soured over time, takes one to three years, and we're constantly just filling small barrels in our basement, tasting them, blending them to create this very difficult thing.
So if you start making it now, it might be ready by the time this meeting was over? Ms. Toy?
I think, like you just said, you've done this before, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought. So I want to commend you for taking that building and really doing some good work in there and making it successful, because at one time it was Herc's. And, you know, we went through a lot of ups and downs with that building. So thank you very much for all you're doing, and I want to offer an approving for this again. Good luck. Yep.
Council President? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you. I just want to point out and to say, if you haven't been to Supernatural, get there. These guys have an amazing selection. My favorite's the Snosbury. I'm going to just give you guys some props. They sponsored the bar at the Livonia JC's event. And I tell you what, if you haven't, get there. It's phenomenal stuff. So keep it up the good work.
We have an approving. Any objection to that being on consent? I see none. Is there any audience comment on item number two? I see none. You gentlemen are all set. You have an approving. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item three is a block party from Wafa Denaro to be held on Saturday, August 12th, from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Huff Street between Ladywood and Kingsbury Street, with a rain date of Saturday, August 19th, 2023. Good evening.
Hi.
Your name, please?
Wafa Denaro, 15680 Huff Street.
All right, tell us about your plans.
We're having a block party. The road will be closed off. And we'll be, we'll have food trucks, ice cream trucks, games, music. Same, similar to what we did last year.
Perfect.
And it will not go as late as even this meeting, so we'll be in good shape.
Promises, promises. Mr. Morgan? All right, we have approving by Mr. Morgan. Is there any objection to consent? I see none. Thank you for visiting us.
Thank you. Guys, have a good night.
You too. Any comment on three from the audience? I see none. Item four is a block party from Maggie McGrane to be held Saturday, August 26th, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Rayburn Street between Williams and Levann, with no rain date requested. Is Ms. McGrane here? Can I have an approving to move this to the regular?
I'll offer an approving for the regular meeting to give the petitioner an opportunity to come to city council.
Ms. Nash, can you make sure that our office contacts the petitioner? Thank you. Is there any audience comment on item four? I see none. Moving to five is a block party from Karen Worden to be held on Saturday, August 26th, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Flamingo Street between St. Martin's and Breton Streets, with a rain date of August 27th of 2023. Good evening. Your name, ma'am?
Hello, Karen Worden, 19651 Flamingo Boulevard. I'm just asking for permission for our 16th annual local block party.
Sounds great.
So move.
Anything in particular happening?
Um, so we kind of have it down to a sign. So we just, we have just food. We have a local house band, which is my husband and his friends' karaoke games.
So you don't want them playing in the house, so you put them on?
Exactly.
Can I have a motion?
And we will shut them down. I tell them the council says, nope, 10 o'clock, you're done.
We can make it nine. No.
Whoa.
Ms. McIntyre?
I'd just like to offer an approving for consent. Karen, I know you've been here all those 16 years. I haven't been here all 16 years, but you've been here a lot of those years, and thank you for, you know, all, everything that you do and taking the leadership and coming and doing this. And I know I always talk about what I think are signs of a really healthy community. Engaged citizens are certainly one. And engaged citizens, you see that in a lot of things that are reflected. No more so than block parties, right? Block parties are a sign of thriving communities and neighborhoods. So I think this is great, and thank you for being here every year.
You have an approving on consent. Is there any audience comments? I see none. You're all set.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Item six is a block party from Brenda Shaw for Saturday, September 9th, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Sussex Street between Sherwood and Fitzgerald Streets, with a rain date of September 16th. Good evening. Your name and address?
Hi, good evening. I'm Brenda Shaw, 15583 Sussex Street.
Okay, what are your plans?
Requesting to have a block party. It's our 26th annual. We start with a bike parade, and then we move on to games, and eventually a potluck dinner, potentially a band later in the evening, bounce house for the kids. So kind of the same agenda every year, but we have a great time doing it.
Council, do you have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion from Toy to approve that. Is there any objection to consent? You're all set. You're free to go. Good luck.
Thank you.
Any audience comment on six? I see none. Item seven is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission for petition 2023050205 submitted by Costco Wholesale. They did pull that, so we'll note that for the record. That may come up again later. Item eight is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, petition 2023060206 submitted by Gerald Todd Clark on behalf of ServiceMaster requesting to develop a planned general development involving a conversion of an existing eight-story office building into a climate-controlled self-storage and first-floor retail, including residential and commercial restoration services, construction of drive-up self-storage units, and five single-family residential lots on the property at 29200 Vassar Street, located on the north side of Vassar Avenue between Parkville Avenue and Middle Belt Road in the southwest quarter of Section 1. Mr. Torremin, are you going to kick us off here?
I will, and I know the council has a full description of the project as well as the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting, so I'll make this a brief... Again, this is a petition involving a planned general development involving the former Livonia Pavilion East office building, which is on Middle Belt Road directly across from the former Sears Department Store. The plan is to convert an eight-story building into a climate-controlled storage facility that would include retail on the first floor, as well as a residential and commercial restoration service company called ServiceMaster. Additionally, portions of the existing parking lot on the east side of the building or the property would be developed into two more buildings that would be used for drive-up, non-climate-controlled storage. And then additional five single-family lots would be added to the property. So this property was initially developed in the 1970s. The site is about four and a half acres in size. Access is available from the south off of Middle Belt via a public street that is called Vassar. The rear of the property also has frontage along Parkville Avenue, which is a residential street. The property is zone C4, high-rise commercial, and is shown on the future land use plan as part of the former Livonia Mall mixed development center. The existing building on the property is about 122,000 square feet. It is vacant, and it is blighted. The main building appears to be, appears on the plan as Building A. And again, the first floor of Building A would have a mix of commercial uses that would include office, retail, and indoor storage. And then floors two through eight would all be devoted entirely to climate-controlled self-storage. Altogether, there would be 738 storage units. Buildings B and Building C would be developed on the east part of the site. Building B includes two rows of storage units. Building C would include a single row. These would all be constructed of corrugated metal-paneled building, about 11 feet in height. So these are non-climate-controlled storage units. And then along Parkville Avenue, the plan shows five single-family lots. Four of those would measure 60 feet by 120 feet. And then the fifth, which is the largest lot, would measure 90 by 120 feet. So these would all be consistent with the N1 neighborhood zoning. There would be security fencing provided along that portion of the site on the north, the east, and the south side. Electronic gates would restrict access to these areas. The building itself would be completely renovated, both on the interior as well as the exterior. On the exterior, it would contain a combination of insulated metal panels. There would be CMU, brick, as well as copin and some stone. And then on the east, on the east side of the building, there would be a canopy that would be built over the drive-up loading area. In terms of parking and landscaping, the parking areas would be completely reconfigured, and new landscaping would be provided throughout the site. The site plan shows 74 parking spaces altogether. These would be distributed on the west, the north, and the south sides. There would be 50 spaces available for customers and employees. And then 24 spaces would be located within the secured portion of the site. Many of those would be used by the ServiceMaster operation. The landscape plan shows 76 new trees, 610 shrubs, perennials and ornamental grasses. And then at the west end of the property, bordering the commercial district that's along Middle Belt Road, the plan shows a landscaped courtyard. This park-like feature would be enhanced with various plants, a gazebo, benches, and ornamental fencing, as well as paved parkways. And I think if you go through yours, if you scroll through your packet, you'll see several renderings that give you an idea not only of what the building would look like upon completion of the project, but also this park feature, again, at the west end of the property. There would be a small stormwater management pond provided on the north side of the property. There is screening required, obviously, along the north side of the property where this abuts residential. There's an existing wall. The resolution requires that that wall be examined to see if it needs to be either replaced or reinforced. An additional screen wall would be provided between the Building C and the proposed single-family lots on the east side of the property. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this item on July 11th and approved the petitioner's request with minor changes, including a limit on where the signs can be placed on the building, additional trees both on the north and south sides of the property to help shield it from the residential, and then final approval of the building exterior colors by the city council. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any initial questions from the council?
I apologize, I lost the video here.
Okay, I will invite the petitioners to come up. Please identify yourself and your relationship with this project, please, and tell us what you would like us to know.
Thank you, Mr. President and city council members. My name is Dennis Cowan. I am with the law firm Plunkett Cooney, and I represent both ServiceMaster and MySpace Self-Storage. And with me this evening is our full team. First of all, Mr. Clark, who's the actual petitioner, he is the owner of the two companies. Gary Garretts, who is manager of all the new projects, including this one. And then last but certainly not least, because he's the one who's put together all these beautiful renderings and the plans, that is Hunter Galbraith from Design House, who does all the work with MySpace Self-Storage. So I'm going to be brief because you've had a long evening already and you've got a lot of information, which I'm sure you're going to review in the, if you haven't already, in the coming couple of weeks. We have been at this with the city since January. We were very pleased with the results of the first two meetings with the rapid response team and some good suggestions that came out of that meeting. One of the most positive ones was the fact that in our original plans, we had 295 outdoor drive-up units, which is very popular among our customers. And the suggestion was made to consider five new homes on Parkville, and we took that seriously and we changed our plans. So we reduced 210 outdoor units, a lot of extra parking that wasn't needed. And the residents, I will tell you, are very pleased in particular with that thought, which not only creates new homes and new homeowners in the community, but also creates more of a buffer, particularly with the length of those particular lots. We then moved forward with a meeting with our neighbors, which occurred on May 11th at Clarenceville Methodist Church, and that was an excellent meeting. And I think the fact that we've had neighbors come out in support since that time at the Planning Commission meeting speaks volumes. If I can capsulize, Laura Murray, who's lived there for 25 years adjacent to this property, I think she spoke for all those who were there with the vandalism, the police calls, all the problems they've had to put up with, especially the last 12 years since the building has been vacant. We believe, and we were certainly very pleased with the five-to-one vote of the Planning Commission. And they asked us a lot of tough questions and we answered them. And I think they were satisfied with the results and satisfied with the plan, and that's the most important thing. We're presenting a mixed-use plan here, primarily self-storage, no denying that, but with the ServiceMaster business, which used to be headquartered here in your fine city, and now the headquarters would return with the retail, with the green space, with more of a buffer, with the new homes. We believe that this is a plan that is important to the area, certainly important to the neighbors, and we respectfully would request that you place this on the agenda for thoughtful consideration of approval. And I'm here, along with our team, to answer any question at this time, and if not tonight, whatever the appropriate mechanism is, we can answer those. I do want to take one moment to thank Mr. Teramina and the planning staff. I work in communities all over the state, and you have as fine a planning department as any. He gave us very constructive criticism and very tough criticism, and I hope we have responded appropriately in his department representing the city.
Thank you, sir. To my colleagues on the council, are there any questions or comments? Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to petitioner for being here tonight and to your entire team. To Mr. Toramina, I know, trying to rehash memories, was there, is this project deficient at all in the zoning ordinance for self-storage? I know there was some cleanup that you did with storage, special waiver uses and whatnot, with storage companies in the community. Does this proposal meet everything? Is there any deficiencies there, anything we have to worry about there? Does it, is it good? Because, for example, the overhang, you know, are we allowed to have overhangs on storage? Just some of those things, are we, are we good there?
I'm not aware of any deviations, anything that would be, you know, contrary to the zoning regulations.
Great, thank you, Mr. Toramina. To the petitioner, question. So if ServiceMaster, I understand, looking at the renderings, very nice plans, the renderings on the first floor would be a ServiceMaster, a private company, and then the rest of the floors would be public storage.
Right.
What happens if ServiceMaster, you know, redoes their company and things change, and they have to get a smaller footprint? Will the rest of those floors then be open to the public for more available storage to the public and not just ServiceMaster itself?
Yes, we estimate at any given time, because that's how the company got in the business. ServiceMaster obviously has to store commercial and residential furniture and things of that nature when it's damaged in a fire, water, et cetera. So at any given time, ServiceMaster customers would be taking 10% to 30% of the self-storage that's available in the building. If they were to ever move, it probably wouldn't change, but because they'd have to put it somewhere. But it would be then made available to the public. But right now, the intention of ServiceMaster is to stay in place. They want to come back to Livonia, they used to be down on... They used to be down on Brookfield in the industrial part of town, years ago.
And a last question, do you guys have any other projects? Does the petitioner have any other projects similar to this in other communities? And what's the status of those projects?
Yes, well, this company specializes in taking tired old eyesores and converting them. Most recently, they did that with a property in Warren that's going to open shortly, which was an old banquet center facility. They took properties in Lansing. We, this is just what they do. They take where there's a problem and convert it into something positive for the community. They're doing well on all their properties. They're headquartered in Brighton, they're a Michigan, they're a family-owned and Michigan-based company, only here. And this store, I believe, would be number nine? This would be number nine in Livonia.
And are those tired old building projects, are those completed? What phase are those in? Are they operating?
They're all completed, except the Warren one. When we get to see about?
August 15th.
August 15th, so that was, that was just done. And I wanted to mention one other thing, very important, that Mr. Toramina told us, and that has been done, I guess, with other projects. We did have an independent study done by an acknowledged expert, Self-Storage 101. That report was included, it's 148 pages long, 184 pages long. And without, you know, cutting through, because I'll let you read the conclusions and study for itself, but the report did conclude that this is a B-plus site and development. In the storage world, that's very important. This is the type of study that's relied upon, that my clients will take the lenders who specialize in self-storage. So they felt very good about this result. It was important to us that, it was important to them, for obvious business reasons, to have a good market study. But as a result, we feel very heartened by that study, that we do have a good site, a good location, and a great city to be located in.
Are you all set, sir? Anybody else from the council? Ms. Toy?
Thank you, if I may, the petitioner. Sir, so they've done others, is what you're saying, right?
Oh, yes.
The buildings, et cetera, of this type with storage?
Well, some are, oh, all self-storage.
All self-storage.
Yeah, all self-storage.
And what kind of dollar amounts do you think you'll be assembling or putting together for this facility?
As we told the Planning Commission, the investment in this property will be $8 to $10 million.
Okay. And have they contacted or have any of you met with any of the neighbors that surround that building at all?
Yes, we had a meeting, we invited all the neighbors on May 11th to the Methodist, Clarenceville Methodist Church.
Oh, that's right.
And they have subsequently been supportive and came out to the Planning Commission meeting in support of the project. They're very pleased. They just want the, like I said, the vandalism, the eyesore. They believe negative effect on their property values as a result of this. And we're very pleased to have their support. But more importantly, we're looking forward to the opportunity to follow through on the plans and take away the eyesore that they have to live with.
So nothing but positive comments?
Yes, from the neighbors we've met with, yeah.
All righty. And just lastly, how long will this take for you to perhaps?
I'm going to defer to the expert, I'm going to ask Mr. Garretts to come up and answer that question, since he's just went through a project.
Thank you.
Your name, please, sir?
So my name is Gary Garretts, I'm with MySpace Self-Storage. As far as the timing for the construction effort, because it's a conversion project, it'll go considerably quicker than a tear-down in a new construction building. So we're anticipating that it'll take us about eight months from the day we start until the day we should have it all completed.
Where could we see some of your works?
So you can go to East Point on Grashit Avenue at nine and a half miles, it's called Stevens Road. Grashit Avenue at nine and a half mile. On, in Warren, you can go up Hoover Road to Martin Road, right on the corner of Hoover and Martin.
Would you mind just calling our office tomorrow and giving us those locations?
I'd be happy to.
Would you?
Absolutely.
We really appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
If I could just add, at this, at this very moment, it's almost been moving parallel. We are working with the city of Roseville on a project where Utica Road comes into Grashit. We're going to use the existing former Sacred Heart Church and all the buildings and a former credit union building, and we're going to use those same buildings and build within, along with some outdoor storage also. It's kind of interesting that we're doing these both at the same time. But again, trying to use current assets in place to revitalize and reinvigorate those properties.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did you have questions, Mr. Barr?
I think I just have one question. Just, I made a comment before the question, the residential piece of this was a really good move on your part. I mean, that's, I love the way this just completes the neighborhood there and that, I mean, somebody made the comment about that was strategic on your part, and I was like, well, of course it was. You guys are trying to create something that's attractive to what the cities, you know, for the city, and I just thought that was a really good move on your part, is one element of it. I have one question for Mr. Toramina. As I look at the Vision 21 plan for that area, the, this property, if I'm reading that plan correctly, is envisioned for a very different use. Am I, is this essentially, I think it's, there's a lot I like about this plan. How concerned should we be about that? I mean, because we're talking about 10 millions of investment into a property for something that our Vision 21 plan appears to envision very differently.
I think the focus of the former Livonia Mall Special Planning Area was, was the Livonia Mall property itself or the Sears property. So I think most of the vision that's presented in the master plan is really focused on that property. When you look across the street and you look at all the existing commercial, while it is part of that same special planning area and mixed development center, I think it has to be understood that it has, you know, that there's going to be projects that are going to have to occur within the context of the existing built environment. So what you have here is an eight-story building that is not likely to go away. So the question then becomes, how does that property get redeveloped within the context of that, of that mixed development center? So, so does it fit within the vision of what's shown across the street? No, not, not exactly. It doesn't, you know, have multi-family residential, it doesn't have the commercial that's right up to the street. But again, you have to, you have to understand that within the context of what this property is today and how it's situated in relationship to that overall mixed development center.
To your point, yeah, thank you for that. And to your point, I realize it was the same thing for another self-storage facility that we approved on Seven Mile. And I see the same thing there, that that didn't necessarily fit what the Vision 21 plan did either. But to your point, understanding the existing context, taking that into account, so. All right, thank you for that.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Mr. Toramina, do you have any, I guess, analytics on the amount of storage facilities that are currently in the city? I know one, you know, obviously the other storage facility is within walking distance. Do you have any numbers on?
Yeah, I think while that data, I'm trying to think of if we compiled it citywide. We probably do have that, some data relative to that. But I think what you'll find is that these, these operate on these trade areas that range from three to five miles. So the data is very complete when you look at the market study that was done for this project, the market studies that have been done for other similar projects within the city. So we rely heavily on that information, I think, to understand the full context of, of the storage that is not only available in, within the city of Livonia, but also within those given trade areas that, in this case, extend into Redford, extend into Farmington, and maybe even partially into Southfield.
And so I appreciate, I know, I sat down with the petitioner, we looked over stuff. The plan, you know, I think the plan is phenomenal for what is currently there. And just as the caution that I expressed when we met is, you know, this is, and Councilmember Barr brings up a great point, is, you know, we have a master plan, we have question marks on the Sears property. You have two, you know, dilapidated buildings that are just west to the proposed property. Piranhas is just south. And if you've been in there lately, half that building is vacant. I don't know how much longer they're planning on staying there as well. And I look at that whole site as opportunity. And I, it just, I get really nervous about snapping the tape on another storage facility when we've got one so close. In the event that the Sears property does take off and there's a huge development, that property then becomes extremely important and very valuable. And so that's my hesitation, and for that reason, right now, you know, it's tough for me to, to be in support of this. Again, I think it's a great plan, I just think it's not the right spot and use for that facility. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, that was kind of one of my questions to Mr. Toramina. Don't mean to put you on the spot, it's a tough question. How many storage companies do we have in the city? And from my understanding, basically you just said it's kind of a hard answer, to answer right now. So that'd be nice to kind of figure out how many storage companies we have in Livonia. And that's kind of where I'm going with them, I share the same sentiments as Councilman McCullough. I don't want every vacant building in the city of Livonia turning into a storage company. I don't want every vacant parking lot in the city of Livonia turning into a used car lot. I want to be, you know, I want a welcome business. I mean, these renderings are some of the nicest renderings I've seen, and I've looked at a lot of different proposals on council, so I sincerely appreciate that. I just have a really tough time looking at eight-story tall building that's a storage building. Now, at the same time, you know, this, this building has been vacant for decades, and we finally have a petitioner that's come before us that has a thoughtful project. It just, I don't know if I can, I just have a very difficult time envisioning eight-story tall of storage with more outside storage. We just had a discussion about a month ago about Eight Mile and Middle Belt. There was a petition that didn't come before council for storage. There was a petition last year at the old AT&T building for storage. And I just assume this, this will continue on, more and more storage. I know there's a storage company next door, I know they had other plans, if I remember correctly, something with more storage there too. It's like, it's just over and over again, more storage, storage, storage. And in terms of Mr. McCullough's point on the Sears property, I know that the planning department and city administration is working hard trying to find someone to purchase that building. There's been people that wanted to purchase the old Sears mall. Unfortunately, there's a lot of history there. I can only imagine what that's going to look like, you know, hopefully five, 10 years from now, if there's some sort of, you know, development that takes place there. I just kind of scratched my head thinking about eight stories of storage. But it is a tough decision, because you look at this building, I drove by yesterday, I was in the parking lot, half of the windows are smashed, boarded up, doors are boarded up with locks on there. The parking lot has weeds as tall as I am, and those are six feet tall. So it's a difficult decision when someone invests this much money into a project and this much thought, working back and forth with the city. So I do appreciate that sincerely. And I appreciate that the petitioner wants to invest their money in the free-market capitalist society, right? We're going to invest the money, we believe it's going to happen. But I do caution a little bit on these studies, because we've seen studies where, in the former project we had, they had a study saying that they needed more storage. But then there's a study saying we don't need storage. So I have a hard time validating these studies, because at the end of the day, you're paying people for a study and they're going to give you the information that you want. So that's just a piece of my mind on that, but it is a difficult decision for me personally, how I'm going to follow this. But thank you for your guys' time.
If I could just suggest, my clients, who are very experienced, would not even consider this project if the market study didn't come back positively. More importantly, I think they have the experience and a know-how that leads this to a positive decision for them. If I could suggest this, and I recognize the dynamics in the Vision 21 and in the mall nearby. But I'd work with a lot of developers, and I can tell you one thing. If somebody, one of my clients came to me and said, and we drove through this area, they'd say, "We know what we're going to do here. What's going to happen with that eight-story building?" I believe actually doing something with this property will take that question away from anybody who wants to develop the mall property, because you'll be able to point, "Hey, we have redevelopment in this area, we have mixed-use facility." And by the way, I know... And by the way, I know one of the things being considered is multi-family for that area. Well, who's the number one user of self-storage that's multi-family? And believe it or not, the study does say there's up met demand and there's a reason why. We have a continual society that's mobile. And when people move, they bring all their stuff and they don't have anywhere to put it. And then we have people who have a lot of stuff and outgrow their garage and they have to put it somewhere. One of the reasons we really love the outdoor storage is one of the primary users of that is classic, people who own classic automobiles. They can't go into an eight-story building, but they certainly can drive right up. They can't work on them there. But my point is, I think there's equities on both sides of the issue here. But the more important thing is, is what the residents have been through for the 12 years. And to continue to hope that something's going to happen, we're presenting something that will happen.
Mr. Morgan and then Ms. McIntyre.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to rehash what Councilman Donovan said. But I, I still have, I, I do have some concerns regarding the amount of storage that we have in that area. So I will just let it go at that because he pretty much said it all, so.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
There was a, good evening, Mr. Cohen. Thank you for all the work that you've done and appreciated the meeting that discussed. We had it was quite a while ago now.
Yes.
There was a note, and I can't remember if this came up in our conversation, but in the planning commission notes, there were questions about the structural integrity of the building and whether that would support storage. Storage is, my understanding, and I'm not a, I'm not a civil engineer, but the loads, the loads from storage are very different from the loads when you have, you know, what was in there before off the space.
Right. I'm going to let Mr. Garrett's answer that. I will say this, this building was built at a time when things were built a little bit more sturdier than they are today. But they also, I should let you know, this company deals with, you know, issues with buildings and retrofitting all the time due to damage and water, you know, smoke damage and water damage and other kind of damage. So I'm going to let Mr. Garrett's answer that question.
Once again, I'm Gary Garrett with MySpace Self-Storage. So we have actually sent engineers in and we've looked at this structure fairly carefully. So it's a precast concrete floor and wall system structure. And typically those were designed back in the day when this building was built for about 270 pounds of live load. The self-storage building code, the, the state of Michigan building code for self-storage requires a 100-pound live load. So this is almost three times as sturdy as it needs to be. We've had people go in there, we've had engineers go in there and examine the structure, be given the age of the, of the property, et cetera. And they've assured us that, that it's perfectly sound. Our intention is to gut out all of the interiors, make it so that the windows are all blocked off. We're going to rewrap the whole exterior of the building in order to make it beautiful. So speaking to the question about the eight stories of self-storage, if the, if the issue in your mind is, is it too much self-storage? We have evidence that says it's not. We have experience that says it's not. If the issue is eight stories of self-storage seems like an awful lot of looking in windows at storage unit doors, that won't be the case in this property at all. It, it won't appear to be a self-storage building from any of the streets surrounding it.
Thank you. I have one other question. This isn't, again, this is something that was discussed in the, in the planning commission notes. And, and this goes beyond this project. This really goes to, I think, to Mark and maybe to inspection through the chair. I do have a concern, and, and I, and this is, I think really maybe it goes to inspection or to law, that we allow these buildings that are just abandoned, for lack of a better word, right? And neglected by the owners, to just fall into a terrible condition that really doesn't conform with our ordinances. And they get rewarded because it, they get rewarded in a sense. I mean, the, the value of this building is very low, right? But they get rewarded because it gets to the point where somebody can pick it up at a bargain price. And, and I'm not faulting anybody who does pick it up at a, at a bargain price. But do you understand what I'm, what I'm saying, Paul?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree at all with you. It's a, I'm not trying to pass a buck, but it becomes an inspection issue. And then part of the problem is, is for us to demolish that building, I don't think council would want to see that bill coming across its desk. Because that'd be astronomical, because there had been some talk about that.
Right.
And the cost to actually condemn it and demolish it would be astronomical. So I don't know that that's, I, I don't know what the answer is.
It's, it's not, it's, it's not completely dissimilar to the House of Denmark.
Right.
Right? That's just, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President.
I think, Mr. McCullough, did you have something? I'm trying to go here and.
Do we have a motion on the table?
We do not have a motion.
Again, I, I appreciate everything that you guys have done bringing this forward. I just, you know, I don't want, I, I just don't think it's the, the right use for that specific location. And for that reason, I'm going to offer a denying.
Support.
We have a denying that'll be on the regular. We don't need support because of the study. Did you have something else to say?
Yeah, I had a question too, Mr. Termina, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. President. As we look at this project, it's got multi-facets of development. You've got residential aspect, you have the storage element, and then you have this, this retail shopping center. I know there's a motion on the floor, so I apologize. But these, these retail centers that shows FedEx and UPS, is that what, has the, has the petitioner already spoke to those tenants? And have you already worked with them that you're going to get those two tenants there? Or what happens if you don't? Is it going to turn into, could it have the potential of turning into, you know, whatever tenant they find, a, an event space, a restaurant, whatever that? I know it's, the, the purpose of it is to be mail-related and whatnot, storage-related. But what happens in the event they can't find a FedEx or a UPS store, et cetera, to fill those vacant spots, to occupy them? Would the zoning, if this were to be approved, whatnot, would it allow for them to go out and get a law firm tenant or a restaurant tenant, so on and so forth?
I believe that question was to me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The answer is yes. So those are retail spaces that are locked in on the plan. And I think back to your question earlier about what would happen if ServiceMaster was to leave. And I want to just clarify this because I think your question really, or if I understood it, was if ServiceMaster, who's going to occupy a, a large area of that first floor, if they, if they leave, would that area be converted over to self-storage? The resolution that was adopted by the planning commission would prevent that. So those areas are designated on the plan for this service, commercial and retail areas. They cannot be used for additional storage. So to answer your question, is the zoning is commercial, the, the underlying zoning is commercial. And retail and general office and medical office, for that matter, are all uses that would be treated as a use by right within that zoning classification or that zoning district.
So to clarify, in the FedEx or the UPS renderings we have here, those two other retail spaces, they could, for example, put some sort of other use in there if they need to occupy the space?
Yes. Those were just examples, I think, that the petitioner pointed out because of their, because of their, their relationship or synergistic, you know, synergy with, with self-storage would be highly desirable types of uses to locate on the first floor.
Anybody else from the council? Mr. Barr?
So I, I certainly understand the concerns. I've expressed some of them myself. That being said, I think there's actually a number of questions I had tonight or comments. And Mr. Cohen actually addressed each one of them before I had to ask. While there's concerns with this, I think there's really strong points for this proposal too. And, you know, vote on it in two weeks. I know there's a denial on the table, but I think it's fair to, I'm, I'm an offer and approving on the table as well. Because I think there's really strong points for this for our city. You go over and look at the condition of that property now. And we've got someone that wants to come and invest $10 million into it. And I think, I won't go step by step through the questions I was going to ask that he answered, but I think he's made a strong case. So I'll offer an approving. I will say in full disclosure, however, in offering the approving, I was kind of waiting to see if somebody else would because I'm actually going to be out of town for the next meeting, will not be here for the vote. But I think there, I think it's worthy of an approving on the table so we are both to consider over the next two weeks.
Okay, I'd like to open up the floor at this time to anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item. Is there anybody who'd wish to speak? Good evening, sir. Please tell me your name and your business address.
Good evening, council. My name is Jerome Ruggerello and my address is 29157 Mile Road. I represent Livonia Budget Storage. I represent a facility that is approximately 300 feet from the proposal. I have a couple of answers to some questions that were asked this evening that I'd like to provide to council. Namely, number one, how many facilities are located in the city of Livonia? There are 22 competitive facilities in the city of Livonia to the proposal. 10 of those facilities are in a three-mile market radius of the proposed facility for a total of 835,000 square feet. There is over a million square feet in a four-mile radius. I don't want council to confuse feasibility with demand. Anything's feasible. I even think that it may be feasible to bring old life to this dilapidated building. But that doesn't create demand. There is currently an oversurplus, an oversurplus of storage in this area. And study after study will show you that there's an oversurplus based on the population. I'm going to give you some facts tonight. Our facility is 300 feet away. We've been open for 18 months, a year and a half. We're 28% occupied. The other competing facility, Cloverleaf, they are approximately 35% occupied. State-of-the-art, state-of-the-art facilities, both of them. Climate control, which is what is necessary to be built in today's marketplace. This would be reactionary planning, a reactionary land use. It is not proactive planning. That building was an office building. Nowhere in any planning guidelines could anybody point to that says that you mix residential with storage, commercial. And I even heard something tonight say that there would be a proposed medical, medical office if something went astray. Who's going to, who's going to come into that building with that type of use? The building has been neglected for decades. It's not habitable. It's vacant and abandoned. It really, really needs to be torn down and redeveloped into something with some proactive planning that the area can use, that the citizens can use. Not a mix and a hodgepodge of housing and commercial and this use and that use and vehicles that will be stored around. The ordinance is, is very specific on self-storage. You have a very comprehensive ordinance in your city. It was well thought out and it was well drafted. And I can point to several things in this proposal that do not meet that ordinance. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, I say no, excuse me, I see no further audience comments.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one question of the last gentleman that was at the podium?
Mr. Ruggerello, you have a question from Mr. Barr, if you don't mind going up to the podium.
Maybe you could just acknowledge me from there too. I was just going to ask, you mentioned 22 self-storage facilities within a three-mile radius. Do you have that information available that you could forward to council?
I do. Yes.
Please do. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. If there's nothing else from the audience or from the council, we do have an approving and a denying, both for the regular agenda on August 9th. So we'll move on from this item. We'll go to item number nine. Thank you all for attending, interested parties. This is a vacating position, excuse me, it's been a long night. Vacating petition from the planning commission for petition 2023050301, submitted by Dave Hoard to determine whether or not to vacate a surface drainage easement at 17260 and 17270 Carroll Drive, located on the east side of Carroll Drive between Six Mile Road and Harrison Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 12. Mr. Zlinsik, is this you?
I think, I can take this one since Mark's busy. Basically, we have no issue, I believe, on the parcels because the owner owns both those parcels and built, I think, some sort of facility there. So as far as I'm concerned, there's no issue. Mark, you want to chime in on the vacation of the?
Oh, I apologize.
Carroll Drive.
Okay. I was focused on the other project. It's a relatively simple, I don't know if the petitioner is here or not. This is a surface drainage easement that extends right through the middle of a piece of property. Goes underneath the house. Engineering has reviewed this. They have no problem with vacating the, the surface drainage easement. It was part of the original plan that I think goes back to the 1940s at least. So it's, it's more or less a housekeeping matter to, to remove this as any kind of a, you know, an encumbrance on the title.
Thank you. Can I have a motion from the council? Mr. Morgan?
A motion to approve on regular, regular.
You'd like that on the regular? Is that what you said?
Yeah, just approval, just approval.
Approval. Is there any objection to that being on consent? So we'll put the approving for nine on consent. Is there any audience comment on nine? I see none. We'll move on to 10. 10 is a request for approval for Senior Alliance 2024 Annual Implementation Plan from the Department of Parks and Rec as required by the Aging and Adult Services Agency to be submitted to the State Commission on Services to the Aging. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Council President Jolly. Ted Davis representing Parks and Recreation. We're just asking council's approval for this Senior Alliance 2024 Annual Implementation Plan. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on the subject.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
I will, I will just say that I've been on the board of Senior Alliance for, I think this is my 14th year. And, you know, these kind of, for us, they kind of tend to be things that we look at, right? And say, oh, yeah, that's okay. The amount of work that goes into putting this annual implementation plan together is tremendous because of all the different sources of funding that the Senior Alliance receives and because all but, all but our grant, and even grants come with, all but our, sorry. I'm, it has been a long night. All of our funding streams, with the exception of some small contributions that come from private donors and, you know, places like the Community Foundation, Livonia Community Foundation has, has provided grants to Senior Alliance in the past. 90, I think it's like 98%, 95% of all of the funding is government funding from either state or federal, a little tiny bit from the county. And the annual implementation plan is required to say how all of this money is going to be spent, as it's required to be spent. And also, is it's going to be spent in order to benefit the maximum number of, of Senior Alliance clients? It's probably not appropriate for me to offer the approving, but I just wanted to share that, hoping that one of my council members will.
I'm sorry. Mr. Barr?
Yeah, I'm just spitting my words out very slowly.
I'll offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
Any audience comments on 10? I see none. We have an approving for consent. Item 11 is an award of bid from the Department of Parks and Recreation to replace the water slide bolts on the indoor water slide at Kirksey Recreation Center from budgeted funds. That sounds like a great job.
It sounds like a job. I'm glad we're hiring out if, with council's approval here. Ted Davis, again, representing Parks and Recreation. We're requesting that council authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Slide Guy's restoration. This was our sole bidder on this project in the amount of $38,592. This work will be done during the shutdown week, our annual shutdown week at the Kirksey Recreation Center. This was actually brought about by our annual inspection. Our state of Michigan inspector that, this is the same gentleman that goes around and inspects every slide in, in the state of Michigan. Even amusement park rides came through, noticed our bolts were in some spots needed to be replaced and urged us to replace them as quickly as possible. And this was our first available time.
Mr. Barr?
When I first saw this, I thought, are you kidding me? $38,000 to replace bolts? And then I looked at the detail and I looked at the hours and had the same reaction you did. I'll offer this for approving. I'll offer this for approving for consent, if there's no objection.
The scaffolding alone is probably worth it.
I can't believe he didn't let you slide.
Mr. Davis, I'm sorry, I don't have the info in front of me. Do we have an exact number of bolts, out of curiosity?
I do not have the exact number of bolts, but if you take a look at the Rextoner slide, I mean, around every single joint, right, there are fiberglass pieces that are bolted together, and these are stainless steel bolts, and they're fairly substantial. I would say, you know, easily a couple hundred, easily. And again, scaffolding up a four-story high water slide is not the easiest thing in the world to do, as well, in tight spaces.
I agree. Any audience comments? I see none. We have an approving for consent on 11. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you very much.
Item 12 is an award of bid from Public Works for the purchase of a tow-behind emergency generator, including an additional five-year extended warranty from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works. This is a portable tow-behind trailer-mounted diesel generator that includes a versatile power capability with electrical panel receptacles that would be able to connect to different types of outlets and load requirements at a variety of buildings and equipment throughout the city. This is really intended for emergency use purposes. This was bid out publicly through Mitten, and a bid opening was held on July 11th. Three bids were received. Cummins Sales and Service was the lowest responsible bidder, meeting the requirements of our bid, providing the best overall project and the best available warranty. So it's our recommendation that council proceed to accept that bid from Cummins and authorize an expenditure in an amount not to exceed $115,860, which includes a extended five-year warranty on top of the three-year standard warranty for that item. That comes from budgeted funds from the Capital LA Other Equipment Fund. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. McCullough? I don't know if you want to make a motion.
I'd be happy to offer an approving and consent.
Any audience comments? I see none. Thank you, sir. We have approving for consent on 12. Item 13 is a request to accept a stormwater facilities maintenance agreement from the engineering division, from, coming to us from engineering, for the Livonia Estates Limited Organization in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage for the Allied Commerce Center Building Five at 31800 Enterprise Drive in the southeast quarter of Section 27. Mr. Zalinsik?
Mr. Chairman, just the housekeeping issues. You know, once the project's complete, everything's been reviewed. We're looking for the approval for stormwater agreement by city council, and have recorded for record purposes. Thanks.
Thank you. We have an approving. We'll put that on consent if there's no objection from Toy. Any audience comments on 13? I see none. That concludes the agenda for this evening's study meeting. We'll go back to audience communication. Does anybody want to talk to us? It doesn't look like it. We'll go back to the council. Any closing remarks for my colleagues? I see none. We'll call it quits. Good night, Livonia.